I can start today's meeting. It is October 12th. That's 9:32. Erica, if we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Okay, if we could go ahead and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go ahead and approve our agenda, our attorney would like to talk to us, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to address an issue early on this morning because we know we have some guests in the audience. I believe the Board is aware that we met with many business owners in Adams County last week, or actually the week before, time flies, to talk about their concerns about our outdoor storage regulations, the proposed regulations. As part of that meeting, the county manager and I both committed that we would ask you all to delay consideration of those regulations to allow us more time to work with our business owners and stakeholders to fully develop those regulations and potentially make changes to what is being proposed. And so, we had planned to come to you during AIR today with a proposed schedule with what that might look like. Basically, what we're asking is to postpone a vote on those regulations that was currently scheduled in early November and move that to January, or perhaps even February. So, we will talk to you about that timeline this afternoon in AIR, but I just wanted to get on the record, since we have speakers here today, that that issue is before you.
And this is just for the outdoor storage?
That's correct.
You want us to postpone on. So, when we go to that item on our agenda, we'll be pulling, under your recommendations, pulling out the outdoor storage?
It's not actually on your agenda yet today, Commissioner Henry, but I just knew there were speakers in the audience on the issue today.
Okay.
It was actually not scheduled to come before you until November, but again, we have a lot of business owners that are very anxious about that timeline and wanted to bring forward to you today in a public setting that we are requesting to postpone that timeline to give us more time to work on it.
Okay.
And again, like you said, certain of the proposed regulations, we will continue to move forward, but those addressing outdoor storage is our recommendation that we continue the discussion on those.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on. Next to the agenda, the motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Baca.
My apologies.
All right, motion is passed. All right, next is awards and presentation. Good morning. We would like to take a moment to recognize October as Code Compliance Officer Month and express our appreciation to our own Code Compliance Officers for the work they do in the community. Commissioner Odoricio, could you read the proclamation, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a proclamation for Code Compliance Officers Month dated October 2021, whereas Adams County Code Compliance Officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly qualified professionals who are committed to improving neighborhoods in the course of their daily duties. And whereas Code Compliance Officers share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing zoning and nuisance codes and ordinances. Whereas, Code Compliance Officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve. And whereas, Code Compliance Officers have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and regularly interact with a variety of state officials, county officials, first responders, legislative boards, commissions, and agencies. And whereas, Adams County wants to recognize and honor Code Compliance Officers and professionals and bring awareness to the importance of Code Compliance to the communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaims the month of October 2021 as Code Compliance Officers Month, and signed by all five Commissioners.
Great, thank you. Today, we have Beth, our Neighborhood Service Manager, and Gail, Co-Compliance Supervisors from the Community Safety and Will Bean to provide a few remarks. Beth and Gail, familiar faces. Hi, guys.
Good morning, Commissioners. Beth Torgerson, Neighborhood Services Manager. Thank you, Commissioners, for the recognition today of the Code Compliance Team. I cannot say enough about this team and the level of professionalism and dedication they have to Adams County and its residents. Led by Supervisor Gail Moon, this team works diligently to respond quickly to Code Compliance complaints and proactive removal of graffiti throughout Adams County. Over the last year, they have been busy implementing the Toolshed Program, the Neighborhood Parking Program, and providing resources during the pandemic to other areas. I am proud to work with each and every one of them and want to thank them for their service to Adams County. I'd like to turn it over to Gail Moon to say a few words.
Thank you, team.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for letting us speak this morning. I just want to thank you for recognizing this month. It means a lot to my team. We actually will be going to the training next week. Three of my officers are going to get certified, so that'll be a good thing. We'll get more training. We also have the National Association, which is in two weeks that a couple of us are going to. So, we do participate in a lot of training classes and try and keep up on how other jurisdictions do things. We steal programs from them and all kinds of stuff, but I really want to thank you guys for supporting us in carrying forward the Adams County message of keeping a clean, safe, beautiful neighborhood and property values up and as much as we can. It means a lot for us to carry forward your goals and objectives that you have set forward for the county and for the employees. So, thank you very much. Thank you for my wonderful team. They work really hard every single day. So, thank you.
And could we have the Code Compliance Team stand up, please? Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioners, do you have any comments? Okay, I don't see any other comments. I do want to thank our Code Compliance people. I know it's a very difficult job. You know, you're kind of like the police. You know, you want people to show up when they show up, but when they show up, it might not necessarily be what you want them to show up for. So, just saying, having gotten tickets for trash cans. Not in Adams County, unincorporated, just in the municipality, just saying. They're a little pickier. So, thank you for all that you do. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. And next is a public comment. Erica, who do we have signed up?
The first person is Sean Egan.
Good morning.
My name is Sean Egan. I am the owner of Iron Women Construction and Environmental Services, a business that has resided in Adams County for almost 20 years. We have about 300 employees, about 100 of which live in Adams County. I want to thank the Commissioners, the County Manager, and the planning staff for their efforts to improve Adams County. I'm very pleased to hear the county attorney's comments this morning about the process and our ability to participate at a much higher level. I'm committed to working with the Commissioners, the County Manager, and the planning staff to continue your efforts to improve Adams County. And that's improvement for existing businesses, such as mine, and others represented in this room, as well as your ability to attract and retain new businesses in the county. Look forward to working with you and the planning staff on trying to find some language that accommodates the existing businesses in our operations as you try to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erica, who else do you have?
Rachel Easton.
Rachel, if you could come down, please.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Easton, and I'm a resident of Adams County. You might remember my adorable daughters, who got up to speak to you a few meetings ago. Their bravery to stand up for what's right inspires me every day, and I'm working on being brave like they are. I'm here to fight for them and for all children, their freedom and the future of our country, which seems to be in shambles right now thanks to our government. If you will recall, my daughter said that we aren't going to give up our country without a fight. The fight begins here in our county and in our state. What kind of future will our children have if you and the government continue to take away our freedoms, our rights, and our liberties? You might think it's just a mask, but it represents so much more. You have to look at the big picture. The government is conditioning us little by little to take away our God-given freedoms until they are in complete control. And you are helping facilitate that, whether you realize it or not. Is that what you want? I don't think that's what anyone wants. You've heard concerned parents, week after week, get up here and voice our concerns, and yet you do nothing. You've heard statistics proving that masks don't stop the virus and are actually hurting our children, and yet you do nothing. You've heard about children being depressed, and those who have taken their own lives or who have attempted to because they hate school so much because of all of this, and yet you do nothing. You've heard many children, including my own, plead with you to give them the freedom to go to school and not have masks be the focus instead of their learning, and yet you do nothing. This is not the way that kids should go to school. When will enough be enough? When will you listen to our voices and show the people you support us? Masks are dehumanizing. Kids need to see smiles. It brightens their day. They can't see their teachers smiling at them. Masks are lowering immune systems and making kids sick with croup and RSV. Why are they being forced to wear a mask seven hours a day for a virus that has a 99.997 survival rate? It makes absolutely no sense at all. It's not about health. It's about having control over us and over our children. I would like to think that you are all good people who care about our community, but you are not listening to us. So, I have my doubts that you care about us or any of our children, which is very sad and disappointing. You are our elected representatives. You are our voice, and yet you choose to ignore the things that we are saying. Before you know it, you nor I will have any freedoms left if we don't stand up and fight against this dictatorship and tyranny. Then will you say, "I wish I would have done something when I had the chance"? Then will you say, "I wish I would have listened to the people's voices and stood up and fought with them and for our freedom"? If we don't stand up and fight, America as we know it will no longer exist. We need you to stand up and fight with us and for the future of our children and the future of America. I don't know if anything I've said today will have an impact on you, but please remember that we are in a war between good and evil. Which side do you want to be on? I don't know about you, but I choose to be on God's side. We will not comply with evil. Opt out of tri-county health and create a health department just for Adams County and appoint individuals who actually look at the science, not biased or political science, but actual science. Choose individuals that will listen to our voices and act. And if you continue to ignore us, we will do everything in our power to remove you from your positions. Please act now. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Jenny Cooper.
Okay, can you say that name again?
Jenny Cooper.
Jenny?
I'm Jenny Cooper. I moved to Brighton two years ago to be close to my daughter and grandchildren, who that was my daughter that just spoke. And I've never been a part of politics ever, and I brought my Be Strong Courage sign because this is really what this is about for me. And a lot of stuff is just, I hadn't read my, heard my daughter's talk, but I come to you as an American. We're all Americans. That's why I'm here, because I'm an American. And what is America? It's the government. I thought it was of the people, by the people, for the people. We don't serve the government. The government serves us. So, I've been wondering who you are. I've come to this meeting a couple times, and I've never seen your faces. So, I looked up online so I could see your smiling faces because I connect to people by, I love getting to know people. I connect to people by their faces and their smiles, and I'm thinking, "Why are all you guys masked"? I don't know. There must be a mask mandate in this county or something. But Lynn Baca, you're a second-generation Adams County. You grew up in Brighton. You're the first Latina Asian Pacific Islander to be elected at the Board, which is amazing. Congratulations. Your grandfather was a farmer. I've lived in the mountains, but I love Brighton and this county because it's farmland, and I was a farmer's daughter. And you have a lot to do with that. I know I have very much time. My talk, I'll have to finish next time. And we have Steve Odoricio. Is that how you say your name? There's his face and his smiling face. And I love your face. He's very handsome. You have a law degree. You have a lot of really great things. Social justice, equity, neighborhood prosperity, a lot of great things you're standing for. And we've never seen Emma Pinter's face. And she's looking at me, and her eyes are smiling. I can tell people, it's called smizing. Your eyes smile because we can't see your faces, but we can see your eyes. She's dedicated her life to public service as an attorney, working in legal aid. I mean, she's loved the Colorado way of life. She's come here to work as a mountaineer guide. I mean, that's awesome. I can connect with you on that. That's so great. I love the mountains. Lived in Granby, Colorado for 37 years. And one's not here, Tedesco. He was in the United States Navy, which is so amazing.
If you could wrap up your time.
Okay. I'll be back for the rest of the talk. And Eva, you grew up in Adams County. It's about freedom. We are experiencing tyranny. Why are we willing to give up our freedom for safety? Why? Why are we? It's not about help. We know it's not about help.
I hate, because we have so many other people signed up.
It is okay. It's about control. And we'll...
And since you called Commissioner Tedesco, or Commissioner Odoricio handsome, now we're going to have to live with that all day, just saying. But thank you.
Well, I wish I could see your face. Thank you very much for having me today.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Erica?
Paulina Romano.
Good morning. All right. Over this past summer, Adams County went level clear on the COVID-19 dial, removing mask mandates and returning life to normal. Children were not forced to mask. Many were being vaccinated as they saw fit, and we were assured, once we hit a 70% vaccination rate among the population, that we would return to normal. In July, 70% marker was reached, yet we seem to be moving backward. Week after week, we have come here asking for answers, and it seems no one is able to give them to us. The data does not line up. Our own governor is not raising alarm and does not think our current numbers warrant panic. As of last Wednesday, there was a total of 26 children under the age of 18 hospitalized with COVID. 26 children out of our 1.26 million child population in Colorado is .00002% hospitalized with COVID. We all know that children cannot mask properly. Heck, there are adults that cannot mask properly. Our children have the highest chance of getting through COVID without any long-term effects, so why are we punishing them and forcing them to sit in a filthy mask all day long? Many staff and educators have been mandated to be vaccinated. Therefore, what is the end game? What is it that you want to achieve? Mr. Odoricio mentioned vaccines for our students back in August. Is this next? Commissioners, I am aware that you are in receipt of the Cora productions that show that Dr. Douglas operated out of emotion and operated to please people when issuing the mask mandate for children. We are aware that the emails exposing this have been sent to you. Dr. Douglas issued his mandate for the purpose of looking good to a select few people. Do you think that is fair for our children? Does that sound like the Delta variant is ravaging? We have asked repeatedly that you help us find a solution that everyone feels comfortable with, yet you continue to be complacent. We have not felt heard. We feel as if you continue to place blame, and we need people who are willing to take action. If you do not want to help stand up for us, we will find someone who will. We encourage you to move away from tri-county health and leave it up to individuals to decide what is right for them and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Renee Huerta.
Renee?
Hi, my name is Renee, and I go to Bell Creek Charter School. I think the parents should just choose if their child wears a mask. It's hard for me because I have asthma when I'm in PE. I lose my breath, and I, and my throat gets itchy. With a mask, it's hard to catch a breath, and I miss class. I'm to get my inhaler. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Cameron Bertrand.
Cameron?
Hi, thank you. My name is Cameron Bertrand. I will neither be as cute as Renee or as handsome as Commissioner Odoricio. Just figured I'd keep it going. Thank you for letting me speak today. I work for a company called EFG, and we've done a fair amount of development in unincorporated Adams County over the years and hope to do more. So, I come here as a friend of unincorporated Adams County to talk about the series of code amendments. It sounds like a portion of that related to outdoor storage is being slowed down. So, I guess I'm here maybe to suggest that what's good for the outdoor storage goose might be good for the remainder of the overlay gander. It's a process that's come about really quickly. It started this summer. I think the first of the actual code language was made available in August. And the process, because that language came out kind of fully formed, the public meetings that have been held around it have mostly been developers and landowners like myself whining to staff meeting, to staff members, and I apologize for that. But I do think there's a missed piece there that would be more constructive. And I think we know from experience that a meaningful planning process is a community-based process, and I think the goal here was to try to have Adams County implement plans that you've made for Federal Boulevard and the TOD areas. And I very much support that. I am involved in a group that owns a piece of property near a TOD, and I'd like to see that happen. But I think the way that happens is by getting stakeholders, property owners, residents, business owners, developers in small groups, and really with maps and Legos, and really trying to figure out what's keeping those places from developing the way we'd like to see them. How do we get from where we are to where we want to go? And I don't quite feel like that process has been allowed to play out or given time. So, I think my ask is, or suggestion that the Commissioners consider, since the balance of these code amendments would come before you in the month of November, is that that train get slowed? is that that train get slowed down too, to allow for some of those meetings to take place, to learn more about what exigencies may lie in the code amendment that's drafted today and what other things we might be doing to really bring about that vision. So I'm a supporter of the exercise. I just would suggest that it could stand to move a little, move a little slower. I grew up in the South and as a teenager, my dad would say that in the Bible, everybody walks to work. So if somebody pulls up in a limo and offers you a ride, it's probably the devil driving. So, which is just his way of saying shortcuts usually don't pay. So I think it's worth all our time to take a little longer on these. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Erica.
That was everyone signed up.
Okay, great. Okay, is there anybody else? Okay. Thanks for reminding me. I appreciate you. If you could come forward and state your name. Appreciate it.
Why did I do that? I am 65 years old. My name's Kathy Moore, M-O-H-R. I'm 65 years old. I'm a personal trainer. And I think that most people need more exercise. Eyes up here, guys, Ms. Pinsker. It's not really applying to you because I know you hike. But I think most people need more exercise. Would everybody here agree? It's not a yes. And I think most people here need to stop eating so much sugar because we know it's bad for you. This is scientific fact. But you know what? I don't have the right to tell you guys that. I don't. Even though I'm a fitness professional, I know what I'm talking about. Clearly, I live it. But I don't have that right to tell you what to do with your life. And you guys don't have the right to tell these parents to mask their kids. And they don't have the right to tell, I choose to handle the pandemic through a healthy lifestyle, being mentally, physically, emotionally healthy to boost my immunity. I don't wear a mask. Please, give us the choice. Give the parents the choice. Let them teach their kids to live healthy. Let them teach their kids to make their own decisions about their bodies and to assess risk instead of just being afraid. This culture of fear is not good for anybody. You guys are wearing masks. That's your choice. Okay. I respect that. But please, instead of a culture of fear, please let people make their choice. And let me tell you one more thing. These parents are not giving up. I'm new to Colorado, which is why I'm breathing like this after one car rule because I'm still not acclimated to your thin air. These parents are not giving up anytime soon. They're not. There are hundreds of them in this group, and they will be here, week after week after week. I've never seen warriors like this fighting for their children. And it makes me proud and it touches my heart. Thank you so much. I'm done now.
Thank you. Last time I saw a cartwheel like that was with Congressman Perlmutter. I said, the last time I saw a cartwheel like that was Congressman Perlmutter. He does cartwheels in parades. And I think he's approaching 70. Would you guys quit? Enough. Jeez, it could be all day. We'll have to live with that. All right. Is there anyone else that wants to, any other public that want to comment? If you could come down and state your name, please.
Good morning. My name is Shawna Herter. One of these days I won't have to be here, right? We're going to get this right. I wanted to talk about how y'all voted a couple of weeks ago. I don't believe any of you are health professionals. Correct me if I'm wrong. But you mandated that your employees have to take this exploratory use medication. Is that not true? Two weeks ago?
This is just for comment. It's not back and forth.
Okay. Well, she gave me a look like she's telling me no. This is exploratory. You guys, I know you're all jabbed. So I just want to ask the question. If it works so well, why are you afraid? If it does what its job is, its purpose, and it's protecting you, then you shouldn't care if we have ours or not. Same with my children. You know, my son actually has an exemption, so I don't have to be here. But for these kids back here and the other kids that are at school that are having these struggles, do you know how bad the mental health issue is right now? I know Dr. Douglas had this all-knowing, masks don't cause that problem. He hasn't done any research on it, but as a doctor, he can go ahead and say that. You're Tri-County Health officials saying that masks don't cause mental health issues and distress for children when you've seen how many kids come up here and tell you otherwise? The fact that you guys are our voice, but remember that you got voted in by us. I know you sit higher on this little shelf here, but you're not higher than us. We put you in office and you're supposed to work for us. There has been surveys. Your people have spoken and they want choice. I want, I want them to be able to wear a mask if they want to. I don't believe they have a choice. I believe it's been mandated, right, county officials? It's, it's all about choice. We're not hateful humans that I want to get anybody sick, that I want my kids to get anybody sick. There's no proof that the masks have done any good. According to your own treasured CDC website, there is no proof that those masks that you're wearing do any good. If you live in fear, that's your choice. I will not push your fear on my children and the children around me or my family. God gives us an immune system, and it's worked all these thousands of years. So why would it stop now? Is COVID real? Yes. But again, you guys, look at your numbers on your CDC. The deaths are not mostly from COVID. They're of, they're not of COVID. They're with COVID. I don't understand why this is such a, we could, you could have people here helping you with things in the city and things in the county, getting this county better. You're coming to the point where you're pushing people and you're going to fail, and the whole county is going to fail because of your poor choices. Do we want that? No. We're supposed to work together. We could work together, and we could be doing things that matter for the community instead of this back and forth every week, week after week after week. You know, it's always put the burden on us to prove that the masks are, you know, harmful. Where's your proof that they're helpful? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Okay, if you could come forward and state your name, please.
My name is Kathy Mills. And again, I'm not a public speaker. Our country was founded on freedom, freedom to choose and freedom for body autonomy. But you guys are taking that away from the county employees, and I think that's wrong. And you're taking it away from the kids by not standing up for them to Tri-County. When masks were mandated by Tri-County up to 18, it then affected my kids. And my 17-year-old, like I told you two weeks ago, in his words, how he feels about it, we chose to put him in a different district. And that district is Douglas County. And Douglas County just voted, the commissioners just voted to let parents choose masks or not. And the school that my son has been at has allowed parents to choose that from the beginning, and that's why we moved him. But my other two boys are in 27-day, and Tri-County has mandated masks for them. And these two boys are disabled. And they can't keep masks clean, and they would come home with it covered in food. And the teachers were not changing it for them. And after eight hours a day and it covered in food last year, I was disgusted. So I went to the doctor and asked for an exemption for them. And for fear of his license, because the physicians are being threatened that their license will be pulled if they give mask exemptions, he would not give me a mask exemption. But he did write a letter to the school stating that the masks need to be changed hourly. How many of our children, how many of your kids are getting changed hourly? A doctor said they need to be changed hourly. If they need to be changed hourly, which we know isn't happening in the district, how unhealthy and bad is this for our children? It's really bad. So the school is not willing to change my son's mask hourly, so they are allowing him the exemption. And I appreciate that he has an exemption. But my question is, when are you going to stand up for us? We keep coming and we're not going to stop. And I'm here for a parents group of over 700. And a lot of them don't have the option to be here because they have to work. But my schedule allows me to be here to speak for them. And so when are you going to listen to us? When are you going to stand up for us and for our children? We are asking you to stand up for us and to listen to us, and that's why you were elected, was to be our voice. But you are not being our voice, and we're not happy. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is anybody else? All right, if you could come down. We are getting big. Yes. If you could state your name, please.
My name is Erica Lopez, and I'm a Brighton resident. So I'm just here again with all my fellow friends and warriors fighting for our kids. And this little guy is never going to wear a mask. I will fight to the end. By the time he's in school, he will never put a mask on. My five-year-old and eight-year-old come home weekly with bloody noses from wearing masks, and I'm sick of it. And I'm here again to tell you that Douglas County did the right thing. And when are you guys going to? They successfully left Tri-County Health, and as of Monday of this week, the kids don't have to wear masks, and many of them aren't. And it's amazing. And I'm here, and I'm going to be here every single week until my kids don't have to either. And I'm a pediatric ICU nurse, again, who has worked through this for the last two years, had a baby during the pandemic, is unvaccinated, and at risk of losing my job protecting everybody else's kids because I won't get the vaccine. And I'm over it. I'm sick of it, and I won't do it for my kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else. We, oh. Okay. Takes a lot of courage to come down here. It makes you very brave. Thank you.
This is Oliver Huerta.
I think the family should, should, should kiss your mom.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone else. So we'll go ahead and move on to elected officials communications. Commissioners, do you have any comments? Commissioner Baca.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all our speakers this morning. Both that are here for the text amendments. So we have industry and businesses here from Adams County and also our parents speaking again on Tri-County Health and masks and children. All those issues are of great concern to this board, and I won't speak for the board. I'll speak for myself. In the background, I know we sit up here during public comment, and that's exactly what that section of the agenda is. It's for the opportunity for the public to come and state for three minutes their concerns regarding the county that they live in, and it doesn't allow for open dialogue. So with that in mind, I do have a question for the county administrator. Because what we are working on as your Board of County Commissioners is studying the Health Department and the future of the Health Department, which currently is under Tri-County Health. So if I can have the county administrator Gonzalez give a brief overview on the process that the Board of County Commissioners is undertaking regarding Tri-County Health.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners. As mentioned by Commissioner Baca, we hired a third-party consultant to work with Arapahoe County Tri-County Health to really analyze what our future options are that Douglas, with the departure of Douglas County. I will say Douglas County has passed a resolution that has authorized a separate Board of Health, but they will still subcontract with Tri-County Health. I think that's important for everyone to understand in the audience, and so services will be provided. But we are going through that analysis, and this month, sometime in October, we will be presenting options for your consideration. But we are going through a full analysis of what's next for us with the departure of Douglas County.
Thank you for that update. Commissioner Odoricio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke today. I know that there are different issues out there that people have concerns about. I know it takes a lot of courage for the younger folks to get up and speak and participate in this democratic process. So I want to thank them for coming out. And then I also want to thank the businesses who came out and expressed some concerns. And I do appreciate your approach, Mr. Egan and Mr. Bertrand, which is collaborative and working with our staff. I think that's the way we're going to get through all issues in the community, and I know that that's your approach, and I appreciate that. It's the intent of this board to do what's in the best interest of the county as a whole while also supporting the businesses. And so I can tell you that I think that you're going to continue to see that commitment from the county electeds and the staff. So I appreciate everyone coming out. This is how the process works. We work, and we work together, whether it's Health Department, whether it's other policies in the community. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Okay, I don't see any further comments, so we'll go ahead and move on. Can I have an approval for the consent calendar?
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Do you want a second? Motion is passed. All right, next is new business. County manager, what do you have for us?
Yes, the first item before you is a presentation of the county manager's recommended 2022 preliminary budget. And I'm going to have our Director of Finance and Budget Nancy Duncan present our preliminary budget. And this is just presentation. You don't need to formally do anything. It's just a public comment, open public comment period. So I'll turn it over to Nancy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nancy Duncan, Budget and Finance Director for Adams County. I'm here to present the 2022 preliminary budget as recommended by the county manager, as required by state statute, and so that residents have the opportunity for input. A notice of this public hearing was published in the North Glenn Thornton Sentinel on Thursday, October 7, 2021. The countywide revenue included in the 2022 preliminary budget is $629,485,174. Property tax revenue is expected to increase 10 and 1/2% as 2021 is a reassessment year. Sales tax is also expected to increase. Revenues overall are expected to increase 10.7%. General fund revenue is expected to be $270,955,282. The main source of revenue for the general fund is property taxes. All expenditures for all funds are budgeted at $654,996,117. This is an increase of 14% over the 2021 adopted budget. Included in this amount is an increase to the pay plan and health benefit plan cost for 2022. We also have several capital needs, including projects in the Public Works and in Fleet and Facilities Departments. Of the total amount, $559,335,226 are for day-to-day operations. The total of all expenditures for the general fund are $290,909,653. Of that amount, $266,285,427 are for daily operations. The information represented on this slide shows that the proposed revenue is more than the proposed operating expenditures of Adams County. It's important to show that we are not using any fund balance for daily operations. This slide shows operating expenditures, CIP and one-time maintenance projects, and the use of fund balance for all funds and also the general fund. Countywide, the amount of recommended capital and one-time maintenance projects is $95,660,791. The recommended use of countywide fund balance is $25,510,843. In the general fund, the amount of recommended capital and one-time maintenance projects The recommended use of general fund fund balance is $19,954,371. The use of fund balance countywide and for the general fund follows the fund balance policy established by the Board of County Commissioners, which is fund balance may be used for only capital projects and one-time maintenance projects, and should not be used for other projects. and should not be used for daily operations. Including in the, included in the capital and one-time maintenance projects are replacement and new vehicle purchases in the Fleet Fund, the Veterans Memorial in the General Fund, the Baumgartner Nature Center in the General Fund, the continuation of the Fleet and Public Works Building in the Capital Facilities Fund, and an increased allocation to our most vulnerable residents in the Social Services Fund. We'll be discussing these and other projects in the upcoming study sessions on November 19th and November, or I'm sorry, October 19th and October 26th. The next steps to adopting the budget are, um, we'll be holding study sessions on October 19th and 26th. On November 9th, we will have the first reading of the 2022 proposed budget at public hearing. On November 16th, we'll have the second reading and adoption of the 2022, uh, Adams County budget. And on November, um, I'm sorry, on December 15th, we will have the certification of the mill levies. I'd like to thank the county manager and the executive leadership team, the department directors, and also the budget team for working together to get us to this point today. Does anybody have any questions regarding the recommended budget?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Odoricio.
I don't really have a question. I do want to note that I appreciate your approach, uh, the slides that you put in earlier. And particularly, I want to thank this Board of County Commissioners and those that, um, and leading up to this, uh, for establishing that fund balance policy. And, uh, just for those who need to understand what that is, who might be watching from home, it, it's a fiscally responsible policy that allows our fund balance to be, um, to be retained at a level in case we need it at times, but also not to be spent on operational, regular operational expenditures. It's for these large expenses that come up periodically. And so I just want to say that, um, this board and that your department in particular has been rewarded year after year in, um, your, uh, budget process. And I want to thank you for that. And, and I just, I see this going in the right direction again this year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
I just want to clarify something. We are not meeting on December 15th, so the certifications will be done on December 7th. But they're due to the state, I think.
Who was wondering about that?
We'll adopt them here, we'll adopt the counties here at public hearing on November the 16th.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you for that clarification. City manager, what else do you have for us? Or county manager? There's been a lot of news in the cities lately about managers. A lot.
The next item before you is a resolution approving Amendment 1 to agreement between Adams County and ECI Site Construction Management, Inc. for construction management, general contractor services for the Adams County Veterans Memorial. And Cindy will be presenting this item. Sorry about that.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Cindy Stringham, Project Manager with Facilities and Fleet Management. Since the award of services to ECI Site Construction Management on June 15th of this year, collaboration to develop designs for the Veterans Memorial have been underway with preparations for permitting and startup. The first package of construction consists of site work, erosion control, shoreline stabilization, stormwater, and utilities, which will commence once permits are received. Therefore, an amendment is recommended with ECI Site Manu- Construction Management, Inc. for the first package in the amount of $1,200,957.44. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I don't see any questions. Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to approve as presented.
Do I have a second? All right, motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is a resolution approving Amendment 3 to the agreement between Adams County and Saunders Construction, Inc. for the Government Center Space Utilization Phase 2 project. And Cindy will be presenting this item as well.
Welcome back, Cindy.
Thank you. Good to be here. As we continued the Government Center Space Utilization project and finalized the design, some intricate additional requirements were identified, which causes the need to amend the agreement with the contractor. Therefore, an amendment is recommended with Saunders Construction, LLC, in the amount of $85,000. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, are there any questions? I don't see any questions. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Thank you.
Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else, county manager?
No other items for you.
Okay, great. Thank you. County attorney, IC items.
I do, you do. Good morning, commissioners. Um, we have two executive sessions on the agenda today. One is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding condemnation by a special district.
Okay, commissioners, do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Sorry, I'll say, yeah, so move.
Okay, motion is passed.
And then the second one is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 2464024E for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding economic incentives.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion is passed. And that's it for me. Thank you. Great. And I don't believe we have any land use hearings, so we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and continue with our study sessions.